All right, the time is now nine AM. And Vice President Canapah, you can call the meeting to order.
Thank you very much. Good morning, colleagues, staff members of the public. It's nine AM on January seventh, 2025. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. As is our practice, this first meeting of the year will be focused on swearing in, welcoming and celebrating the two new members of this board, Supervisor Gauthier and Supervisor Spear, and on reorganizing the board. Before all of that, let's start with having the Clerk of the Board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, then select the Spanish language, and finally click Done. At this time, I would like my colleague Elizabeth to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Good morning. My partner and I, Polina, will be offering simultaneous interpreting in Spanish. And if you want access to it, first I'll tell you in English and then in Spanish, you will connect to your computer and choose the world icon and then choose Spanish. If you have an iPad or a cellphone, locate the three-dot menu, choose Language and Spanish. Entonces esta junta cuenta con interpretación simultánea. Si tienen un computadora, escogen el icono del mundo en el fondo de la pantalla. Van a escoger lengua y después español. Si tienen un celular o un iPad, ubique el menú de tres puntos, van a escoger lengua, lengua y español.
Back to you.
Thank you for those instructions. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the pledge. Before we move forward into our agenda, it's appropriate that we take a few minutes to honor the life and memory of our nation's 39th President, Jimmy Carter, who passed away on December 29th, 2024, at the age of 100. Early this morning, Carter's body was taken to Washington DC, where he'll lie in state until the January 9th funeral service at Washington National Cathedral. I'm going to request that we take a moment of silence to honor the life, work, and memory of President Carter. Before we do that, though, I would like to ask my colleagues whether any of them would like to offer some comments. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Vice President. I went to serve in Congress in 1988, 86, I should say. And I worked then for the late Congressman Leo Ryan. And Congressman Ryan was the first member of the House of Representatives to endorse Jimmy Carter for president. So, long history with him. I think he represents for all of us the humility and the compassion that we would like to see in a president. And there's no question that in his years after his presidency, he set an example for what a president should do in their retirement. And we are very lucky he served when he did.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any additional comments? Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that as someone who, I would say had to do a lot of learning about Jimmy Carter, I'm just continue to be in awe of his legacy and of the human rights activist and leader that he was in the world. And truly am grateful for all of his service, not just as a president, but all of the decades afterwards. And one of my favorite things that I learned about him was that up until the age of 94, he was still building homes with Habitat for Humanity. And he actually had to be told, "You can't do this anymore." But that is just, what an amazing human being. And may his legacy live on forever. Thank you.
Great. Seeing no additional comments, I want to thank you colleagues for those comments. At this time, I'm going to ask that we take a moment of silence in honor of President Carter. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Item One, the Swearing In Ceremony for Supervisor Jackie Spear and Supervisor Lisa Gauthier. We'll go ahead and take each of these swearing-in ceremonies separately, starting by district, with Supervisor Spear representing the first supervisory district. It's wonderful to welcome Jackie Spear back to the Board of Supervisors. This is a full-circle moment. She served on the board 45 years ago and from there launched a public service career in the California Legislature and the US Congress. Supervisor Spear will be sworn in by another San Mateo County Supervisor and Member of Congress, the Honorable Anna Eschew.
I state your name. I, Jackie Spear, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And we know you will. And we know you will. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations Supervisor. I expect that Supervisor Spear will have some comments at this time. Supervisor.
Thank you, Vice President Canapah. Thank you to my great friend and colleague, Congresswoman Anna Eschew. It means so very much to me that she is here because 42 years ago, we were on this fairy dais, serving the people of San Mateo County and learned our legislative skills here. She went on and after serving for 32 remarkable years in the Congress of the United States and having more than 68 bills signed into law by five presidents, she has just retired. So we have lots of work ahead of her, we hope, right here in San Mateo County. Oh, by the way, there's a helicopter and a Caltrain engine that's been named after her as well. And while my entire family couldn't be here today, the newest member of our family and the joy of my life, my granddaughter, Alina Sierra, as you saw, is here with her father, my son Jackson Sierra, who, I don't know, 38 years ago, I was holding as I was sworn in to the State Assembly for my second term. Always correcting me. I'm honored that you both made time to be here. And to those of you in the audience, some of you were with me at the very first race I ran back in 1979. And many of you were with me in 1980 when I first ran for the Board of Supervisors. I just recognized, and they surprised me, my brother and sister-in-law are here, Eric Spear, a veteran of Vietnam, and my sister-in-law Laurel. Thank you as well for being here. In any case, it is truly, I'm truly grateful for all of you being here because you are indeed the wind beneath my wings and have always been there for me. Let me say a few words about my predecessor Supervisor Dave Pine. You know, a pine is a strong tree. And Dave has modeled his work and has been sturdy. And from school board to the Board of Supervisors, he has championed major policy initiatives that will stand the tests of time. Thank you, Dave, for your integrity, your initiatives, and your intellect that you demonstrated at every turn. And thank you to Supervisor Warren Slocum. After decades working together, I can't believe that I won't have Warren and his genius to call upon, but he still has his cellphone number, so. Let me begin by saying how thrilled I am to be home again. Today, I am wearing the jacket that I wore in 1981 when I was first sworn into office. And yes, it still fits sorta, but the real question is, why do I still have it? I want to thank the voters of District One, who again have placed their trust in me to better their lives. But I want to underscore that as a board member, I will work for all county residents. The services the county provides are for all residents. I also want to thank you, my new colleagues, and the great team of county employees. I know it's a great team because I spent the last few months meeting with nearly every department head and many of our county employees. They are smart and passionately committed to our mission. I was really wowed by them. It will be a privilege to work with our talented County Executive Officer Mike Callagie and the entire county family to deliver for our residents. We have great opportunities ahead to do what the late Congressman John Lewis urged, quote, "Make good trouble," unquote. In my judgment, the number-one issue that we must address is the high cost of living in San Mateo County. It hurts everyone, and it shows up in many ways, seen and unseen. For example, we have a very high vacancy rate in county employment. It's 22% for county social workers and a whopping 41% vacancy in children's services. You can't hollow out a department and have it function properly. And it doesn't stop there. Stationary engineers have a 31% vacancy rate. Appraisers, another high rate as well. Let's talk court reporters. The presiding judge told me that we are short, so short, that we can't hold criminal trials now in the Northern Court. So witnesses, jurors, police trek from North County to Redwood City. But here's the good news. You can become a court reporter with a high school diploma, a 24-month course, pass an exam, and earn $120,000 a year here in San Mateo County. We just need to get the word out. Public service jobs are good jobs, and they're meaningful jobs. County government recognizes that relevant work experience is equal to a college education. That's why 70% of the county jobs honor that principle. We need to be more focused on matching our county residents to our job openings and getting them trained and employed. So let's host a job fair for all our county vacancies and those of other public agencies. By May of this year, I hope we can have a job fair with hundreds of job seekers that can attend. And we can explain to them that if you live in San Mateo County, we want you to earn a livable wage right here in San Mateo County. In addition, I hope that we can create County Core, a paid apprenticeship program for young people ages 16 to 21. County Core would give students paid internships serving the public and prepare them for jobs across our public agencies and nonprofits. Secondly, we must tackle the out-of-control costs of childcare on behalf of all our families. The county can help. First, we need to figure out how to help providers obtain more affordable rent, health insurance for their employees, workers' compensation insurance, as well as obtain an affordable workforce. If we help providers control their costs, they can create affordable childcare. Then I'd like to propose that we do something very big. Let's offer low-cost, universal childcare in San Mateo County. If we become the place where every parent has an affordable childcare spot, we will solve a big pocketbook issue for our families and be a model for the country. Thirdly, we must deal with the high cost of housing. It creates problems that affect every corner of our lives. I believe the county should partner to construct at least 5,000 units of workforce housing over the next 10 years on public lands owned by public agencies, large and small. Let's create workforce housing for teachers, childcare workers, social workers, nurses, mental health workers, and others serving the public. Stanford and the Community College District already do this. And the result is reduced turnover and greater success in recruitment because employees can now afford to live and thrive in San Mateo County at rents that cost half of the going-market rate. And this new effort would be in addition to the efforts we already make to construct workforce housing for the broader public. But this is pretty stunning. Currently, there are 5,400 households that have the benefit of housing vouchers in this county. But there are 12,000 that are on waiting lists. And what makes that even worse, there are 50 families in this county who are homeless, who are sleeping in their cars or sleeping in shelters every night. San Mateo County Government has enormous extra resources, over $100 million annually generated by Measure K sales tax. Excuse me. We have spent $150 million on housing and homelessness and $85 million on public safety and $78 million on health and mental health. I want us to fix what's broken. We should focus Measure K money on really big changes that improve the lives of everyone, like universal affordable childcare or creating workforce housing. I hope we can reevaluate how Measure K is spent and focus it in large part on bringing down the high cost of living in San Mateo County. You know, when I came home, I was stunned to find out that San Mateo County is the richest county in California and the fourth richest county in the country. And yet, we have 30,000 children that are homeless. 30,000 children, I should say, who are living in poverty. When I realized that, I wanted to fix it. And so I can say with great affection for the county and for the health plan of San Mateo County and for donors, some of whom are here in the audience, that starting next month, we will have a baby bonus in San Mateo County for newborn Medicaid-eligible infants that will receive $300 a month for the first three years of life, when all the cognitive growth takes place. And my hope is that we will then be able to take this back to Congress and have the child tax credit restored. Let me end with this. After 40 years of serving on all levels of government, I came to the realization that politics is really local. If you want to get something done, serve locally. It's a privilege now to have the opportunity to do that again. Thank you.
Through President Canapah, the overflow is working. So if anybody wants to move to the overflow in the Manzanita Hall, you're welcome to sit there as well and listen to the meeting.
Great, thank you Supervisor Spear. We will now have the swearing-in for Supervisor Gauthier, representing the fourth supervisory district. Lisa has been a strong advocate for the residents of East Palo Alto for the past 12 years, where she served on the city council, including three times as mayor. She is passionate about equity and inclusion and looks forward to working collaboratively with her new colleagues on the board to improve the lives of all who live in San Mateo County. Supervisor Gauthier will be sworn in by her daughter Brittany Gauthier and her grandson Camden.
Okay. I state your last name, I mean, state your name.
I, Lisa Gauthier.
Do solemnly swear, or sorry, do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations Supervisor Gauthier. Supervisor Gauthier, if you have any comments.
I do. First, I want to thank all of you for being here. You know, as I sit here today, I think that I am my mother's and my ancestors' wildest dreams. I am so thankful that District Four voters have put their faith in me and given me this opportunity to serve. You know, a lot of the work that I do is because of that little guy who's sitting on the front row with the pink bow tie. At four years old, that is my grandson. And his future means the world to me. San Mateo County should be a place where he could grow up, survive, and thrive. And I know we can get there. You know, as I think about the childcare, I know firsthand what it's like to have spaces for him to go and to be able to know that his mom can feel comfortable and knowing that he is safe. To my friends who walked with me day in and day out for almost two years, thank you. I probably owe some of you a new pair of shoes. To my sisters and links, thank you for your support. The 100 Black women, thank you. To my friend Carol, former mayor of Union City, I want to thank you because you pushed me when I didn't want to walk. And to my daughter, I love you. Thank you for pushing me into this field that is probably supposed to be yours. You saw something in your mom that she didn't see in herself. And today, after 12 years of serving in the city of East Palo Alto on the city council, I sit as a Board of Supervisors in San Mateo County. To my colleagues at SVLG, thank you for being here. Thank you for your support. I just appreciate you so much. To former Supervisor Rose Jacobs Gibson, can you wave your hand? And to Anna Eschew, too, you got, just thank you for your support. There was so much support when I decided to run. And I know that there's a lot of work to be done. That this room just shows the amount of support that's here. Again, as we think about the future of San Mateo County, we know that San Mateo County, I grew up here. So San Mateo County is a place where families can thrive, where we all can be successful. I want to thank Warren Slocum for his support. Thank him for his work that he's done. Thank those in North Fair Oaks, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and Redwood Shores. I know that's one city, but in Redwood City. Thank you so much for all that you've done. I won't be before you long. I know that when I ran, I wanted San Mateo County to be the county where we can all thrive. Thank you to Labor, to the Business District. There's a lot of work to be done. And to my colleague Jackie, thank you so much. You've said all of the things that really matter. The cost of living is just way too high. People are moving out because they can't afford to live here. This place, where there are jobs, we should be able to make sure that people can work where they live. And I hope to be able to work with you on those efforts to make sure that we change that. So to my staff, thank you. To the staff of San Mateo County, you are amazing. You've opened your arms and welcomed me. I was here yesterday, and it felt so good. I know that the work is, there's work to be done. Let's go and do the work. I think I'll stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Gauthier. Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Sure, I'll go, I'll go ahead. I just wanted to say how excited I am and honored to have the opportunity to work with both of you. Really grateful for it, to be able to learn from you both, to be challenged by you. And I think really when you're trying, I always kind of think of serving on a board that you're trying to deliver the best product. And you try to get the best people on that board to really deliver those best services. And I look across this. And I am really excited by, to be able to be the teammates with you to do that for the residents of the county. Thank you both for running and for being willing to serve.
Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. When I decided to run for this board, one of my motivations was that this board had the potential to be represented by one demographic only in this beautifully diverse county. And now we have a board that is much more reflective of our county than I think it might ever have been before. And I believe that representation makes leadership stronger. And I'm really excited to welcome both Supervisor Gauthier and Supervisor Spear to a board that does truly reflect our county more closely. And we do have significant challenges ahead of us this year. And I'm confident that together with our collective experience, wisdom, compassion, and commitment to work together, not only will we meet those challenges, but we will make this county one of the greatest places to live for our residents. And I want to take a moment to say a couple of words to each of you. Supervisor Spear, you have been a household name in San Mateo County politics since, before I was born, actually. And I'm eager to learn from your many, many decades of experience. And I'm eager to learn from your many, many decades of experience that you have fought so hard to learn and you have used that knowledge to advance our community in many different ways. You bring both lived experience and political experience that far surpasses anyone else on this board. And that is an asset to our county and to this board. We share a commitment to improving the lives of women and children. And your leadership in Congress around many, many different pieces of work, but specifically around women's rights and human rights and gun sense and reproductive choice are just a few of the accomplishments that you are so admired for and very deserving of admiration for. So welcome. And Supervisor Gochier, your tenure as a council member in the community of East Palo Alto will be and is a huge asset, not just to this county, but to this board. Your community and your leadership is filled with a rich history of taking the lead, of self-determination, of being the first in many, in many ways that I don't even know that the rest of our county truly understands. East Palo Alto has led the way in your, I believe, over a decade of experience on the council is something that I know we will learn from. I admire how loved and well-respected you are in your community as someone who also still lives in the community that I was raised in. I think that is something very, very unique. And, you know, some of your life experience is very, is something I very much connect with, and I look forward to working together. We have, we have a lot of work to do on domestic violence in this community. And it's not easy work, but it is work that I think only folks that really have lived it have a unique kind of ability to focus on. So I want to thank you for being a survivor and a leader and being a courageous, strong woman who is the matriarch of your family and does it so well and so gracefully. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, with that completed, we'll move on to the roll call. Can we now have the first official roll call of 2025, please?
Absolutely. Supervisor Jackie Spear?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Noelia Corso?
Present.
Thank you. Supervisor Ray Mueller? Thank you. Supervisor Lisa Gochier?
Here.
Thank you. And Supervisor David Canepa?
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to honoring the life of and Board Member comments. Do any supervisors have comments or things to share for honoring the life of?
President Canepa, sorry, Vice President Canepa. Today, I'd like to honor the life of Marion Henshaw, a native San Franciscan. Marion was a loving wife, mother, and grandmother. She was also a pillar of Pacifica, working at Cabrillo School as the school secretary for twenty-six years. The memories of many families are brightened by her loving approach to helping parents and kids through elementary school. Marion was a proud supporter of her coworkers, serving as president of Classified School Employees Association Local 128 for many years. She was a warm and loving person to all, but a tough negotiator at the bargaining table for her brothers and sisters and their families in the Local 128. She always welcomed all families with a smile and warm heart when they entered school, whether it was the first day of kindergarten or a parent dropping their child at school for the first time. She was always available for a skin, knee, or stomach ache to comfort a child. She was an avid fan of baseball her entire life. She met her husband Horace at a baseball game and worked at Oracle Park for twenty years, being honored twice as a very important employee by the Giants. Marion was an active volunteer for Meals on Wheels, Cub Scouts, and many other community organizations. She truly left Pacifica a better place. Her passing is a loss to the Pacifica community. She is survived by her husband Horace, her two children, Steve and Cam, and grandchildren, Kerrigan and Natalie.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any other comments? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you. I want to adjourn in memory of Ruth Wisnem, who was a phenomenal leader and philanthropist in San Mateo County and lived into her nineties. And also, former mayor and councilwoman Mary Janney from Burlingame, who served with great distinction over many years.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting, for matters that are listed on the consent agenda, for matters that are set for closed session. Today, I intend to limit all public comment to one minute through the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So we'll take a public comment as Supervisor Canepa mentioned. And also, if you wish to speak on item number one, which was the swearing in, you can also do that during time just for item number one or any other county related matters. So I'll call a few names, and if you could just come and stand up. Jim Lawrence, followed by Deacon Lauren McCombs, and then followed by Nicholas Hardjes.
Happy New Year to all of you. Today begins a new chapter of San Mateo County as we welcome new members to the leadership team. In my opinion, this is a moment to reaffirm our collective commitment to prioritizing the needs and voices of the community we all serve. As we step into 2025, let's make it our collective mission to champion transparency, accountability, and justice. Establishing a civilian oversight board, supported by Inspector General's office as outlined in AB 1185, is not just a new policy. It's a promise to our residents that our trust matters. Together, I urge all of you to lead with courage, ensuring that equity and integrity remains at the heart of every decision you make. Speaking from all of us at Fixing San Mateo County, let this be the year that this board shows bold, community-centered leadership and what it can achieve. Personally, I hope this board begins to build a legacy of dealing with problems as they occur. I certainly hope that kicking the can down the road is a thing of the past and never to be repeated. Again, thank you for your decision to serve San Mateo County.
Thank you. Deacon Lauren McCombs, followed by Nicholas Hardjes, then John Abneton.
Good morning and welcome to the new members of the Board of Supervisors. My name's Deacon Lauren Patton-McCombs. I come before you as the many hats that I wear. I won't go into it. You pretty much know who I represent. At this time, I'm extremely concerned about the potential threat to our immigrant families and rights that might be occurring under the current Trump administration. In November of nineteen, of 2021, I worked diligently with many of you to stop Sheriff Belanos from transferring inmates from our county jails to ICE. And you all developed policy changes to make that happen. And I want to commend you for those who did help. But we are currently in a position where we don't know what might happen. And we cannot let that happen to our immigrant neighbors. I work very closely with them, and they are living in our county with a constant sense of fear because they don't know what will happen. I have so much more to say, but you know what you need to do. You cannot let them go. You cannot let them be living in fear with their children. Do the work that we want and elected you for. And at this, I would like to say, may God's Spirit of love and compassion shine forth in your collective actions to support all who live in San Mateo County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thirteen speakers, Nicholas Hardjes, followed by John Abneton, Jose Alberto Reyes, and Jenny Bloom.
Good morning. On behalf of Congressman Sam Licardo, I'm happy to congratulate Supervisors Jackie Spear and Lisa Gochier for being elected to the Board of Supervisors. Congressman Licardo looks forward to working with each of you to serve the people of San Mateo County.
Thank you. John Abneton, followed by Jose Alberto Reyes, Jenny Bloom, and then Luisa Ip.
Good morning, supervisors, and congratulations on the appointments to your positions. I wanted to take a minute and just acknowledge the Dave Pines commitment to our community. His unparalleled leadership on sea level rise, spearheading Peninsula Clean Energy, banning single-use plastic bags and polystyrene, gun buybacks, and support for marginalized communities cannot be overstated. The personal sacrifices of time and energy were evident in all of his late nights and weekend hours he consistently gave to better the lives of San Mateans, not just in his district, but for all San Mateo County. This highly, his highly impactful dedication to our county will be felt for generations to come. And I, for one, envision a much brighter outcome for us due in large part to his unwavering commitment to resilience and equality for all. And I hope that this board continues in his quest to help everyone in our county, not just the districts that they represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Alberto Reyes, followed by Jenny Bloom, and then Luisa Ip. When you speak, speak directly into the mic, please. Thank you.
I will. Thank you very much. Congratulations to you. I'm here to make good trouble. Ladies and gentlemen, I was, I'm a sixty-year-old man. I came here because my mother and my brother were dying. I got into, I fell at work, became permanently disabled. Three months later, I was in custody for a crime that I didn't commit, no charges. I was hogtied behind my back and beaten, carried through the jail, the front of the jail, and beaten by six San Mateo County sheriffs. And I've spent four and a half years trying to expose it. They've covered it up. I wrote letters to Christina's Corpus office. I wrote letters to Mr. Mueller's office. I didn't mail your letter. But, but anyway, long story short, I spoke to Fixing San Mateo County. There was an officer in San Mateo County that they knew what he was doing. They knew he was trouble, and they allowed him to work. And he went and raped women, okay, on duty. Now, these sheriffs beat me. Are we going to wait till they beat somebody and kill him next time? Because what they could have done to me could have paralyzed me or killed me. I'm just asking for the Attorney General to investigate it. That's all I'm asking for, is help, to investigate, to take out the bad apples. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Bloom, followed by Luisa Ip, then Del Shembary, and then Elaine Salinger. Jenny Bloom.
Congratulations to the Board of Supervisors, to Supervisor Spear and Supervisor Gochier. My name is Jenny Bloom. I am a trustee of the Ravenswood City School District and resident of East Palo Alto. I just want to specifically congratulate Lisa today. Not only has she been a mentor to me and many women in East Palo Alto and many of us who are in service right now to our community. I just want to congratulate you, Lisa. You have been an amazing mentor. You have been an amazing champion of the work that we are doing at Ravenswood City School District and all of East Palo Alto. I just want to tell the board and the county, you guys have a gem. Everything that you guys said that you want to do, Lisa has done in the last twelve years. She has worked on the environment. She has worked on homelessness. She has worked on job creation. She has worked on early childhood education. We know that she truly is a person of service. And you guys really have taken, not taken, but have elevated, elevated one of our leaders into a space where she can continue to make an impact across the county. And she is someone who's already done that in the past through her own work and volunteer work. So I am excited for the work that she's going to do, and I'm excited to continue to partner with the whole board to continue to elevate those things. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Luisa Ip, followed by Del Shembary, and then Elaine Salinger.
Hello. I want, I am Luisa Ip from New California State, the fifty-first state. And I wanted to give you guys a notice. California is bankrupting. And what you're proposing, increasing the size of all these job promissings, who are going to pay for it? You are going to increase taxes? You're going to increase illegals? You are public servants. You serve we, the people. We are giving you the notice. We, the people, have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Adel Shembary, followed by Elaine Salinger, and then Ronda R.
Good morning, members of the board. Thank you. I come here to kind of educate people a little bit. I'm a member of a new group called Mountain Butterfly Collective. And right now, we're opposing the proposed development in the quarry of San Bruno Mountain. It's going to be a freight forwarding Amazon-type of development. It's going to mean excess air pollution going right by Lippman Middle School in Brisbane. It's going to mean light pollution, air pollution, and specifically noise pollution as far as Martin School in South San Francisco, the EIR says. So I'm just here to let you know about that. And also, two things. I'm going to be hopefully meeting with all the board members to give our point of view on this. And also, you're going to be voting on this. You're going to be voting on it because there's a change to the Habitat Conservation Program on San Bruno Mountain and regarding roads put in through endangered species habitat. You will be voting on that, and I just want to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Del Shembary? Oh, thank you. Elaine Salinger, followed by Ronda R.
Hi. I actually submitted two speaker requests. So if I can be given two minutes, that would be great. I, you can let me know, but I'll go ahead and get started. So my name's Elaine Salinger. I've served on the San Mateo County Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Council for seven years, and I've been the chair of the committee for two years. I've been told that I can only speak for my own personal opinion, so that's what I'm doing. If you ask anyone for a list of the ten most dangerous intersections or roads for bike and pedestrians, for cyclists and pedestrians, you can't get an answer because no one collects the data. And I'm requesting that you support a video pilot program that would allow us to collect the data so that we can, so that when the city agencies and county agencies plan where we need bike infrastructure improvement and pedestrian crossings, we know where it is most needed. So I also want to add that the Sheriff's Department, under Christina Corpus's direction, has created a portal so that cyclists and the public can pretty easily submit violations of, for driving. Okay, so number two. Where does the funding for bike paths and street crossings come from? Primarily from Measure A and Measure W. Measure W gives five percent. Measure A gives three percent. The B-PAC fights over scraps of money for projects that need to be funded. And I'm asking you that these Measure A and Measure W don't expire for many years, but there are other allocations where you can take the money and put it towards bike and pedestrian infrastructure. So I'm asking you to please do that. These are for congestion relief, grade separations, and local street funding. And that potentially could add another thirty-eight percent. So I want to also remind you that when you think that freeway widening is a good idea, you need to remember that the widening killed two shovel-ready overpasses for bikes, for cyclists and pedestrians, one at Holly Street, one at Hillsdale. And a young woman in the prime of her life was killed on Holly Street. But there have been so many fatalities. So when you think that prioritizing the convenience for drivers over the lives of cyclists, please think again.
Thank you. Five more speakers from chambers, and then we'll hear speakers from Zoom. Ronda R., followed by John Alexander Shekley.
Good morning. Happy New Year. Two thousand twenty-five is going to be amazing. Fraud is a very serious issue, and it vitiates all contracts. I did not hear you swear an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States for America, written by our founding fathers. So my question to you is, what is the... So my question to you is, what is the United States? Is this a corporation? Is this a board of directors? My daughter was violently kidnapped, strangled under color of law after we reported domestic violence to many agencies of the Domestic Violence Council headed by Noelia Corzo, and we have not received any justice. In fact, we've been badly treated, and I haven't seen my kidnapped daughter in three and a half years. I am calling on the natural law and the divine law for restitution and accountability for the child trafficking syndicate operating out of 400 county center that identifies targets and exploits children for power, profit, and control.
Thank you. John Alexander Sheekley, followed by Eve Sutton, and then is it Meli, Meli L?
In May of 2024, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to allocate $400,000 to Planned Parenthood. Like the Nazis' final solution to exterminate Jews, Planned Parenthood is exterminating blacks. Hitler felt that the Jews create problems throughout the world. Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, felt that the reduction of blacks will reduce problems within U.S. citizens, cities. She located her first abortion facility in a black neighborhood within New York City. Margaret Sanger said, quote, "Birth control is not contraception indiscriminately and thoughtlessly practiced. It means the release and cultivation of the better racial elements in our society and the gradual suppression, elimination, and eventual extirpation of defective stocks, those human weeds which threaten the blooming of the finest flowers of American civilization." Planned Parenthood continues to reduce the black population throughout the world in violation of our four major religions in the United States, which represents 71.4% of our population. Thank you.
Thank you. Eve Sutton, followed by Meli L., and then Catherine Slater-Carter.
I prepared this poem for you, and thank you so much for your decision to serve the public. It's been about 150 years since the Statue of Liberty got a poem, and I'm presenting this as perhaps the update. "Gavel and Oath." "And still they come, called by my torch and flame, exiles, refugees seeking new dignity, keeping faith to build new lives each century. Now their descendants fill the widening frame. Pilgrim, dreamer, make real your heart's true aim. Justice shared in peaceful community. Behold, I promise opportunity, liberty, liberty I still proclaim. She came when she could not own land nor vote. Her shackles barely broken slow her pace. Democracy steers a slow, hope-filled boat. Fog, rough seas, with these remedies in place. Gavel for debate, rule of law, and oath. We pledge to serve, give all, then yield with grace."
Thank you. Meli L. Oh, thank you. Followed by Catherine Slater-Carter, and then Justin Manalo from Daly City.
Good morning, supervisors. It's a great day in San Mateo County, I think, because we have a new Board of Supervisors. My name is Meli K. Laatoo, proud East Palo Alto resident, also a trustee of the Ravenswood City School District. I've had the pleasure of working with pretty much everybody here sitting before me, and I just want to say it is a great day in our community of San Mateo County because there's a lot of change that's happened on this board over the last two years. I think that there's a lot of potential sitting before us, and I look forward to the great work that is being done, but also the great work that's to come. To Supervisor Goché, I've been calling you that for the last two years, and I'm telling you, it happened. I'm so proud to be a person that has been mentored by you, a friend, a colleague, a neighbor, and I look forward to all the great work that you're going to be able to do alongside our other supervisors. So continue the great fight. This work isn't easy, but I believe that we're headed in a great direction. Thank you all.
Thank you, Meli. Catherine Slater-Carter, followed by our last speaker from chambers, Justin Manalo.
Good morning. Welcome again, Supervisor Spear. And it will be nice to spend more time with you, Supervisor Goché. I am Catherine Slater-Carter. I'm on the San Mateo County Harbor District Commission. I am on the Montero Water and Sanitary District Board, and I am also an alternate to San Mateo County LAFCO. I am offering my support and anything I can do to find information or further your, your mission for San Mateo County. I've lived in San Mateo County since I was a little kid, and it has changed a lot, but it has maintained its personality and its care for people. So thank you very much for your service, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Manalo from Daly City.
Good morning. This is definitely, I will echo what folks said today. It is a great day here in San Mateo County, and Happy New Year. I just want to congratulate Supervisors Jackie Spear and Supervisors Lisa Gauthier. You both are compassionate and fierce leaders. It is so wonderful to see you all take your oath today and your seats. And to those that are seated here, Supervisor Canapa of my, of the district I'm in, as well as Noelia Corzo, Supervisor Ray Mueller, and Noelia Corzo, thank you so much. 2025 is looking really bright and beautiful. Thank you for your commitment to public service and for really ensuring that there's changes in our community and in the county of San Mateo. Like the previous speaker, you know, I was raised in San Mateo County since I was eight, and your dedication to the community is huge. So I just wanted to say Happy New Year, and so excited for all the work you are going to do ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No additional speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. As a reminder, this is for general public comment as well as item number one and the consent agenda, which today begins at item number three to the end of the agenda. We do have six speakers, and after the second speaker, I will make a final call for raised hands, at which point I will announce the last name that we will take for public comment. So again, after the second speaker, a final call will be made to raise hands, and a final name will be called at that time. Nancy Goodman, followed by Dan Stejink. Nancy, please unmute and begin.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Nancy Goodman from Redwood City with Fixon, San Mateo County. Welcome to Supervisors Goché and Spear. How exciting to have you on board. And personally, I'm thrilled to have three women on the board, including two women of color. Thank you all for serving. This is a challenging year with housing affordability, living costs, the loss of drug treatment services, and not least, the crisis in the sheriff's office. It's a great opportunity to take the next steps towards civilian oversight, strengthening ICAC, looking to a regular, ongoing inspector general to provide checks and balances, transparency, accountability, and fairness, and support for the sheriff employees who work so hard and are currently suffering. And big, big, the unknown from the new Trump administration with threats of mass deportation and vilifying immigrants. Our county is better than that. We're a county of immigrants. You passed an ordinance in 2023. The sheriff has a similar policy, and we need to stand strong and protect our neighbors who are terrified. We're counting on you for your leadership. Thank you all.
Dan Stejink, followed by Grace X. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Welcome and congratulations to our new supervisors, and welcome back to one of the best BOS presidents we've ever had, Board President David Canapa. I'd like to ask the board, please don't forget Pacifica and the coast. March 16, 2020, we had a pump station burned down. It's still not repaired four years later, although an additional 900,000 was allocated in November. On Christmas Eve this year, we flooded again to 26 inches in the lower Lindemar District. It's my understanding SNC will statistically be the safest big city in California, according to the Attorney General's 2025 State of the Region Report. A big thank you to that for the previous board, including David Pine and Warren Slocum, as well as District Attorney Steve Wagstaff and Sheriff Christina Corpus. Thank you, and Happy New Year. As a sign of respect, I'll turn in my comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Grace X., followed by Adrian. Actually, at this time, I would like to make a final call for public comment. So if you could please raise your hand at this time, I will make that last call and announce that final name that we will take. So please raise your hand for public comment at this time. Okay, a final call has been made, and the last speaker will be Tad. So we have seven hands raised. Grace X., Adrian, Jenny Michael, Ann Schneider, Elsa Schaefer, Becca Keeler, and Tad. Those will be our speakers. Grace, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning. If all the allegations against Sheriff Corpus are true, she definitely needs to be removed. But one of the comments or allegations against her is a homophobic and racist comment that this board brings up over and over again. However, I must say that you guys can no longer use that argument against her. If you stand idle against the allegations that I brought up against a person that is on the Sheriff's Oversight Commission that had an Instagram account, I believe, that shows, makes fun of domestic violence, be crawling over to a dog. Excuse me?
Oh, your audio is off. Please proceed.
You can no longer make, use domestic, use those allegations against her. If you're not going to take my claim against somebody that's on the Sheriff's Oversight Commission seriously, in one video on his Instagram page, it shows him crawl, a baby crawling over to a dog and playing with its private parts, making fun of domestic violence, disabled, the mentally challenged, clearly making fun of, of the homeless people. I brought this up over and over again via different forums, email. I spoke at the last council meeting where I thought Warren Slocum was going to help me. Nothing has really happened, other than city attorney or county attorney David Soherman not doing anything. So again, if you're not going to hold everybody accountable to the same standard, don't hold Ms. Sheriff's Corpus accountable for her racist and homophobic allegations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As a reminder, please adhere to the public comment timer. We now have Adrian, followed by Jenny Michael. Adrian, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. Adrian Bryant, East Palo Alto resident. I'm speaking on item number one. I wanted to congratulate the new supervisors on their election and thank them for their years of public service and for continuing to serve. And to Supervisor Goché, thank you for your years of service to the city of East Palo Alto. I look forward to seeing what work you're going to do with your colleagues. There's a lot to be done throughout the county. I wish you well, and let me know how I can be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Jenny Michael, followed by Ann Schneider. Jenny, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Michelle. I'm a native of D4 in Menlo Park, recovering homeless teacher, mother of disabled son, and a commercial property manager by trade. I'm here supporting my new rec. Lisa, I cried all the way over into the chambers this morning. You are a leader, an inspiration, and someone who I admire. You see and hear people like me, and your representation of us matters so much. I can't wait for you to slay and kick butt on the dais, and I am so honored to have worked with you and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Jenny Michelle. Ann Schneider, followed by Elsa Schaefer. Ann, please unmute and begin.
Am I here?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Ann Schneider, former mayor, city of Millbrae. Congratulations to Supervisor Spear and Supervisor Gauthier. I wish you the best of luck. San Mateo County sees at least six direct revenue streams from San Francisco International Airport. None of those funds are used to help the two cities that bear the worst of the impacts from SFO, San Bruno and Millbrae. Those impacts include noise, pollution, traffic, loss of bayfront, and loss of economic opportunity because of the creation of the airport. San Mateo County has also allowed SFO to do all of its planning by way of the San Francisco Planning Commission. So non-elected people dictate how the airport has moved closer and closer to our communities, bringing in more pollution and impacts. SFO, this has to stop. SFO approval should be done by local hands, whether it's the county and along with Millbrae and San Bruno. Millbrae and San Bruno are two of the poorest cities per capita in the county, and if the supervisors truly believes in everything equity, then you've got 100-plus years of SFO damage to our two communities that needs to be repaired. Thank you. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you. Elsa Schaefer, please unmute and begin.
Thank you so much. Elsa Schaefer lives in Menlo Park and has lived for 40 years with my family in this beautiful county. I am so grateful Supervisor Slocum for your work, not only on the board, but also originally doing so much for elections, which have now spread throughout the county. We first met you, and you had such strength of leadership. That was the beginning of, of all the work. We're so proud of you that you did. Supervisor Pine, you have taught us amazing things, not just in your strength for all of the environmental issues you've made so prominent, but also your insights into the county, which you've been so helpful, really educating us about for Fixon, San Mateo County. When I first saw Lisa Goché, whom I didn't know, I, I was stunned, Lisa, by your background, which is so broad across so many different disciplines. And I look forward to your being able to take that and apply it to so many decisions you'll be asked to make. Supervisor Spear, whom I've known in so many other roles as you've taken on those issues in Congress, we are incredibly proud of the work you've done and so grateful that you are willing to come back to the county. This is a stunning board. We are so grateful and so lucky to have all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa. Becca Keeler, please unmute and begin.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I'm Rebecca Keeler, live in North Far Oaks, was born and raised here in San Mateo County. And I want to first just congratulate Supervisor Goché and Supervisor Spear. Wonderful to have you on this board. I look forward to working with both of you and with the rest of the board in regards to transparency, accountability, and justice for all in various areas. Those would primarily include support of our juveniles, including those involved in the system, protecting our immigrant neighbors, and civilian oversight. Thank you. Welcome to the board. Thank you for your, for serving, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. And now our last called speaker, Tad. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning. I am impressed to see that you took, taken an oath to both the state constitution and the federal constitution. This is a new day for our republic. I will be holding you to account to follow the rule of law. Our current county is not following the rule of law. Calling us a sanctuary city is not the proper position of this county. You are elected representatives. You are not, and at times selected, but you are to affect what the people want. We do not want sanctuary county. It's illegal to cross our borders. We also do not want you to support mandates. Currently, you are in support of mask mandates in official settings, in medical settings. We want you not to follow that. The other thing is Christina Corpus. You attempting to maladministerate and pass an ordinance is not proper. I will hold you to account to state constitution law and federal law, and I will ask you to read your constitution so you know them well, because we will be notifying you through affidavits. I wish you good luck, and I know it's a difficult job, but we will be holding you to account. Good luck. Good luck.
Okay, Mr. Vice President, that was the end of public comment.
Great, thank you. Thanks to all who shared their comments. We'll now take action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Gaultier, seconded by Jackie Spear. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Gaultier.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to matters set for a specified time. The item set for a specified time is item two, reorganization of the Board of Supervisors. This is the time when the board will consider election of officers to serve during 2025. The board's practice is to elect a president and a vice president to serve each year. Has also been the practice to elect the supervisor who serves as vice president in a preceding year, to serve as the president in the following year. I also want to share that the board's meeting on December 12, 2023, the Board of Supervisors approved a motion on a 5-0 vote to formalize a process for the annual rotation of the board's officers. Pursuant to that motion, the offices of president, vice president are to rotate annually by supervisory district. At this time, I will ask our county attorney, Mr. Niblin, to provide some more information and detail regarding the board's December 12, 2023 motion and the mechanics of how it is implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm going to ask the clerk to bring up some slides that might help us to, to sort of better work our way through all this. As Supervisor Canepa noted, the board's practice before December of 2023 provided for an annual rotation of board officers. And our practice had been that the supervisor serving as vice president would become the president, you know, subject to, you know, an approving vote of colleagues. And then we had a rotation list with the next member on the rotation list becoming the vice president. The way things were done before December of 2023, it was really sort of a, a question of a rotation list that was kind of driven by seniority. Newly elected and newly appointed members would be placed on the rotation list at the end behind continuing and reelected board members. So that was pre-2023. In December of 2023, as Supervisor noted, the board adopted a motion that set a rotation list by supervisory district, regardless of when any particular individual member elected to the board came on. And so the baseline, and in fact, what was sort of implemented beginning in 2024 was the rotation list that you have up here, which was an attempt to really kind of recognize sort of what the, what the status was with respect to seniority, but then move forward in a way that, again, the rotation would be by supervisory district regardless, again, of seniority. So what happened at the beginning of 2024 was that the supervisor representing District 4, which was Supervisor Slocum, became president. Supervisor Canepa became vice president. And then the board agreed that the rotation list would follow with District 2, District 3, and District 1. So that was the, the rotation list as implemented in 2024. And so in 2025, if the board were to move forward with the process that was sort of articulated in that motion, the supervisor representing District 5 would become president. The supervisor representing District 2 would become vice president. And then you can see that the rotation list would follow with districts 1, I'm sorry, 3, 1, and 4. And so that, that again, is sort of the, the, the history and then sort of what came out of the December 2023 motion and what happened at the beginning of 2024. Subject to any questions, that's what I have.
Great. Are there any questions for Mr. Niblin? Seeing none, why don't we move to public comment?
Thank you. Members of the public, if you wish to comment on item number two regarding the reorganization of the board, please give me a speaker slip or we can come up to the podium. I don't have any folks getting up. Madam Quirk, could you check online, please?
Sure. At this time, we're taking public comment on Zoom for item two for the reorganization of the board. One hand raised for Anne Schneider, and I'll make a final call after Anne. Please unmute and begin, Anne.
Thank you. I want to personally thank Supervisor Canepa for all the support he has shown the city of Millbrae. And I encourage the board to make him the chair. Whomever becomes the vice chair, I have a standing invitation to bring you around Millbrae and show you just how much happens in our tiny 3.27 square miles of, of land, most of it owned by public agencies. So if you could, I wish you good luck, Supervisor Canepa, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Good luck.
Thank you, Anne. Final call for public comment on item two? No further speakers, Mr. Vice President.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much. With all that said, does a supervisor want to make a motion to appoint Supervisor Canepa to president and Supervisor Corzo to vice president for 2025?
I, Supervisor, I'll make the motion as a person also drafted the policy.
Okay. Great motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Spear. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Supervisor Spear.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gaultier.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Now President Canepa. Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Great. I just want to really thank my colleagues. I want to also thank our controller, Malia Cohn, for being here. Is Malia Cohn here? She just left? If we can give Malia one second. Before we do that, I just want to, you know, take a couple of seconds to really thank this board. And I'm really, really, really ecstatic. Want to thank our county executive. I want to thank County Executive Caligy. I want to thank the team. John, I want to thank you, our, our county attorney, for really, in extraordinary times, working extremely, extremely hard. Robert Mankia. You know, before we, we get to the swearing in, I do have some comments, so if you'll indulge me. You know, good morning. Let me start by first thanking my esteemed colleagues for this opportunity. It is with immense gratitude and a deep sense of responsibility that I stand before you today as your county president for 2025. I'm humbled by the trust that the Board of Supervisors have placed in me, and I'm inspired by the resilience, determination, and optimism that defines our county. I'd like to thank my family. I'd like to thank my wife, Anna Valenzuela, Consul General of El Salvador and San Francisco for 16 years. Stand up, Anna. Thank you. I also like to thank someone who, besides my, my wife, motivates me every day. And that is David Piero Canepa, known as Piero. So give him a round of applause, Piero. I really like to thank my, my staff. I'd like to thank them for the wonderful work that they continue to do every day and who helped me serve my constituents and all residents in San Mateo County. Really appreciate all your efforts. Today, we welcome two new supervisors to the board, Lisa Gaultier and Jackie Spear. I'd like to personally and warmly welcome the both of you and know that your collective insight and experience as longtime public servants will be invaluable to this board. This year, 2025, is a special milestone for San Mateo County. We are not just celebrating another year. We are celebrating a legacy of service. This year marks the 169th year of our county, a time to reflect on how far we've come and to dream about where we're headed. In addition to this historic celebration, 2025 will mark the first full year that 500 County Center, the greenest civic building in the United States, will be open to the public. This building we sit in now is a symbol of progress and a physical reminder of our commitment to serve the people of San Mateo County with transparency, efficiency, compassion, and sustainability. While 2025 is a year of hope and renewal, we cannot ignore the challenges we have faced. Recent events have tested our trust, our institutions, our shared values, and our ability to lead. To those in our county who have worked tirelessly to uphold accountability and transparency during these times, thank you. Today, I reaffirm our collective commitment to healing. Healing requires courage. It requires listening, and it requires decisive leadership and action to restore faith in the systems that serve and protect us. Together, we, the leaders on this board, will work to rebuild trust and strengthen the bonds that bind us together. While 2024 was a challenging year, it's important to note some of our accomplishments over the past year. We broke ground on a new wellness center in South San Francisco to bring health care and county services to North County residents where they are. We created a dedicated task force to accompany law enforcement on domestic violence calls to provide immediate, in-the-moment services. We committed to greater equity for women and children under Supervisor Corzo's leadership. By implementing and staffing the action plan for women and children, of the 18,000 single-parent households in San Mateo County, most are led by women struggling to meet basic needs. We are making concerted efforts to prepare our residents for emergencies by getting them enrolled in public warning systems, learning how to create go bags, developing family safety plans, and convening town halls with our residents, such as Supervisor Mueller has done with the recent tsunami warning that impacted the coast. We extended the Gun Relinquishment Task Force, a program that has already removed nearly 500 pistols, rifles, and shotguns from people who pose a threat. We said enough to retail theft and are looking at actionable steps to combat it. We committed tens of millions of dollars in efforts to ensure all residents have shelter. This includes several new affordable housing developments, including those for farmworkers and veterans and the largest affordable housing project in the county's history at Midway Village and Daly City. We guarantee basic income for survivors of domestic violence and foster youth. On the second anniversary of the U.S. Supreme Court, Supreme Court decision that overturned the right to an abortion, we stood with those who supported reproductive rights and presented $1 million to Planned Parenthood to make sure women have access to high-quality local care. And finally, an accomplishment I'm especially proud of, the county was the first in the nation to declare loneliness as a public health crisis. Loneliness and isolation lead to poor health outcomes such as heart attacks, stroke, and premature death. The U.S. Surgeon General says loneliness can have the same negative health impacts as smoking nearly a pack of cigarettes a day. Together, this board has created opportunities to invest in programs to end social isolation and to help residents connect with each other and services the county provides. It was quite a remarkable year, and the accomplishments I just listed are really only a handful of the triumphs we reached in 2024. Looking ahead for 2025, I want to share my vision for a county grounded in collaboration and common sense governance. These principles will guide us as we address the most pressing issues of our time. First, we must continue to lead in the area of affordable housing. The high cost of living in San Mateo County places enormous strains on families, individuals, and our workforce. By prioritizing smart housing policies, creating partnerships, and sustainable development, we can ensure that every person who contributes to the vitality of our community has a place to call home. Second, our commitment to the environment remains unwavering. From protecting our coastline to advancing green energy initiatives, we must do everything in our power to combat climate change and preserve the natural beauty that makes our county so special for generations to come. Third, the health and well-being of our residents remain paramount. The past few years have reminded us of the importance of a robust public health system. We will continue investing in preventative care, mental health services, and resources for our most vulnerable populations, ensuring that every resident, from our youngest children to our oldest adults, can thrive. Our older results, older adults deserve our deepest respect and support. In 2025, we will strengthen services for this population, ensuring they have access to quality health care, social opportunities, and programs that allow them to age with dignity and independence. Public safety is a cornerstone of any thriving community. We will work diligently to enhance trust between law enforcement and residents, prioritize community public safety initiatives, and ensure that our neighborhoods remain safe and welcoming for all. Our families and children are the heartbeat of San Mateo County. In 2025, we will continue to support initiatives that support early childhood education, childcare affordability, and programs that uplift working parents. A community that prioritizes its youngest members is a community that builds a bright future for all. We also recognize the critical role of entrepreneurship and small business in driving our local economy. By providing resources, reducing barriers, and fostering innovation, we will ensure that our small business owners have the tools they need to succeed and continue enriching our community. We must also embrace and acknowledge the contributions of the biotech and tech industries, including newer companies in the artificial intelligence industry. These industries have created thousands of jobs in this county and are revolutionizing public health and government operations, offering unprecedented opportunities to enhance efficiency, equity, and outcomes by harnessing vast data sets that enable predictive analytics. Finally, we must redouble, redouble our efforts to promote equity. Every decision we make as a county should be guided by the principle that every resident deserves a fair opportunity to succeed, regardless of their background, income, or zip code. Equity is not just a goal, it's the foundation of justice and progress. The last time I held this gavel, four years ago, the world, the nation, and the county were quite different places. We were one year into COVID-19, and while we were making Herculean gains with testing vaccines to combat the pandemic, there were still a lot of unknowns and fear. We lost a lot of loved ones. Many lost jobs, houses, livelihoods. But our county is made of strong fortitude, and this board took swift and tangible steps to help with economic support, increased shelter options, job creation, to help us come back. We didn't necessarily know in January 2021 what the future would hold, but we knew that we are creative, innovative, efficient, and deeply, deeply compassionate. These guiding lights are what helped steer the county forward. I reflect on that time because we began 2025 surly with fears and unknowns. We have a new president. And while we are familiar with this first term from 2017 to 2021, we must be doubly prepared to ensure we are ready to preserve the public's health and safety if federal funds are withheld from the county for the safety net services we provide. That said, county health and the Human Services Agency have very valid concerns. Concerns that the threats to immigrants will have a chilling effect on our ability to engage patients and deliver services. Concerns that the Affordable Care Act, expansion of health insurance that benefits our residents, may be eroded. Up to 30,820 county residents could be Up to 30,820 county residents could be impacted by the loss of income-related subsidies available to purchase health insurance. Concerns that the promised reduction of federal personnel could worsen the ability of the Centers for Disease Control and the National Institutes of Health to coordinate response to communicable disease outbreaks and share critical information. And concerns of how the beliefs of the new Director of U.S. Health and Human Services, some of which run counter to well-accepted science, could hit policy and grants that will directly impact our residents on the local level. Again, these are unknowns, but let me tell you what I do know. I know the county of San Mateo will fight tooth and nail for its residents, especially our most vulnerable. We will not quietly accept changes in actions that harm our community. We will navigate these potentially choppy waters ahead to ensure everyone who lives and works here is treated with human decency and respect. We know that San Mateo County is a welcoming county. We believe anyone who chooses to call our county home deserves the same rights and has the same responsibilities as anyone. One-third of our residents are immigrants. The county of San Mateo was recognized in 2024 as a certified welcoming place by Welcoming America, becoming the first county in the state of California to achieve the distinction for its commitment to immigrant inclusion and belonging. Among the factors Welcoming America considered in awarding the county four stars were efforts to improve the standards of living and alleviate poverty by addressing equity within transportation, childcare, and housing. In particular, Welcoming America cited opportunities for homeownership, civic engagement programs including the Community Alliance to revitalize our neighborhoods, and the Farmworker Advisory Commission, which create opportunities for communication between residents and their government, and for our data collection efforts to help local governments and community organizations make better informed decisions. The county also unveiled its new immigrant inclusion strategic plan last year with an aim to remove the biggest barriers that prevent immigrants from reaching success in this county. We will continue to partner with legal service providers and tailor outreach efforts to reach our immigrant communities where they are and in their preferred language. We will stand united against hate, and let me make this very clear: no matter your race, nation of origin, sexual orientation, gender, age, religion, medical condition or ability, we support you. But these priorities cannot be achieved in isolation. The strength of San Mateo County has always been in its collaboration between cities, agencies, businesses, nonprofits, and residents. By working together, we can navigate complexity with common sense, break down silos, and create solutions that are practical and impactful. With that being said, the county must expand on their efforts to make these relationships even stronger. Before I conclude, I want to highlight an incredible fact that many of us might not know, and then make a challenge to this board and the residents of this county. In 2024, according to the U.S. News and World Report, San Mateo County was the healthiest of 58 counties in the state and the 21st healthiest of the top 500 healthiest communities nationwide. The rankings are based on the health of the population, equity, education, the economy, housing, food, and nutrition, the environment, public safety, community vitality, and infrastructure. The report details that 95.3% of our population has health insurance compared to the national average of 88.5%. Don't worry, I can read in the dark. We have one of the lowest smoking rates in the U.S. at 8.1% compared to the national average of 19%, and our life expectancy is 84.5 years in this county compared to the national average of 75.8 years. The report details that 59.8% of the population have advanced degrees compared to the national average of 33.1%. We have an unemployment rate of 3% compared to the national rate of 3.6% and a poverty rate of 6.4% compared to the national average of 14.4%. We also have a violent crime rate of 209 per 100,000 residents compared to the state average of 418 per 100,000 residents. The report shows that San Mateo County is one of the healthiest and safest in the United States, but in some categories, we do fall short. We fall short in housing affordability as 35.8% of households spend at least 30% of income on housing compared to the national average of 23.5%. We also fall short in neighborhood disparities in higher education as the county has a wide gap of bachelor's degree attainment across census block groups. So while we are the number-one healthiest community in the entire state of California, I want us to strive to be number one in the entire nation. I want us to strive, not because I want our county to receive the accolades that comes with being number one, but rather because those percentages aren't simply numbers. Those numbers are people. They are your friends, family, neighbors, students. They are members of the San Mateo County family who need us to rise to the moment. When they rise, we rise and become the best version of ourselves. I think we can do it if we double down on providing opportunities for our residents who do face disparities based solely on the neighborhood they live. Let's bridge these gaps and make this a government that works for all of us. Let's be number one. In fact, I will be proposing the board create a healthy community subcommittee and possible task force in the coming weeks to bring the larger community together, including in business, in education, and other various stakeholders, to try and achieve this goal. So as we begin this new chapter, I ask each of you to join me in embracing a renewed sense of optimism. Let's celebrate our shared history, honor our achievements, and commit to building a future that reflects the best of who we are. Let's govern with integrity, act with compassion, and lead with courage. San Mateo County, the best days are ahead of us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and let's make 2025 a year to remember. Thank you. And so with that, it gives me a great honor and delight to introduce a longtime friend, Malia Cohn, our California State Controller. Just really thank you for being here, Malia. We go back since about 23 years. We used to work in San Francisco City Hall together, and it's an honor to have you swear me in, and it's just, it's amazing to see what you've done at the Board of Supervisors. Never forget what you've done as a staffer, I was once a staffer, but to see how you've just ascended for all the right reasons, just thank you for being here. I know your schedule's busy, so thank you.
In addition to being one of the healthiest counties, you're also one of the most high-tech.
Yeah.
Good morning, San Mateo County. How are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is a very exciting time. Supervisors, congratulations. I'm very excited to be here. I hope, for all of our sakes, that DJ does not go on and on and on like he did just a minute ago, under his tenure, okay? They cut the lights off for a reason, my friend. You did not pick up on the cue.
Next time, I promise.
Next time, okay, we'll hold on to that. Ladies and gentlemen, I am so humbled and excited to be here, to be able to perform the oath for my friend whom you heard. I've known, we actually, you guys know him as Supervisor Canepa, but I've known him as DJ when we were both staffers, well before we even thought about becoming elected officials, before we were married, before we had children, truly have come up in the ranks. And so it gives me great privilege and honor to be here with you. So would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, David Canepa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties about which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just have some brief remarks as well. President Canepa, thank you for your remarks. Your words have grounded this new board in a concise overview, just kidding, of the work that our former board accomplished in the past two years and set a vision for the years to come. As we have seen here today, our community is diverse, not just in demographics but in perspectives, and as your Board of Supervisors, it is our duty to do right by every single one of our residents. It is our duty to improve and transform our systems so they fairly and equitably serve us all through both support and accountability. We have challenges and obstacles before us, both at the national and local level. May we be anti-racist, data-driven, and committed to disrupting prejudice and discrimination in all its forms. May we continue to uplift equity, justice, and ethics in our work every single day. May we have the collective wisdom and moral clarity to ensure that our actions align with our vision and words. I'm honored to serve our board and community as vice president. Thank you, County of San Mateo.
Any other comments from the the board members? See, no, we want to all welcome you to the Manzanita Room. We have a continental breakfast, but we encourage everyone to come, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your day. Thank you.
Thank you all. The time is now 10:44 a.m. Meeting is adjourned.